Appreciate the patience, what they do right here. Uh, stop. Well, thank you guys. I appreciate you doing that, being here. I do want to call attention and introduce Ms. Stephanie Watson. Stephanie is a convert of the City Park. She starts on the 20th this month. Comes to us from the city's office. So we're thankful to have her and have her here with us tonight. Uh, at this time, Reverend John Wood, the first kind of address church, would be delivering our invitation. We had a death in the parlor today. So we asked me to do that. And if you'll stand, we'll do that. And then we'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Young Marine Private Tate Naylor who come forward. Leadership and that pledge of allegiance. So right here, Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this time together. Thank you for this city and what it means to everyone in this room. And for all these citizens out here, we just ask that your Lord will just give us the wisdom to govern, to govern for your will. Anything we accomplish here tonight, we'll certainly give you the honor and the glory. That's all these sayings by Jesus. Amen. Brother Tate.
Stood by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Councilor, good evening. We did want to be here and have access to the agenda. We do have a board that should sit out tonight. I ask that the House Board would be pulled up, which is set out. Uh, Red Ribbon Week, we're going to have a population number. So, uh, I'll take the set out of one, two, and three. Make motion to approve. Thank you for the support like that. Senator Matt, Senator Mr. Cameron. I'd like to say, I don't know any more than motion has carried. Our board is a proclamation for, uh, Red Ribbon Week. And this comes from, uh, the McInnes County, South Dakota County Young Marines. Uh, the group is located in Charlotte. Uh, Young Marines are proud to impart a mission. So we have a award winning program for boys and girls between the ages of eight and eighteen. Young Marines treat this allows America Hughes by teaching the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, honor our veterans, good citizenship, community service, and living a healthy, growth, and free lifestyle. Young Marines promote the mental, form, and physical development of its members. And the program focuses on character building, leadership, and promote the lifestyle of conductive and productive members of the society. So if you would please help me welcome, uh, Private Tate Naylor for presentation. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kaden Naylor. Um, I'm a resident of Conover. I want to thank you all for inviting me to speak here tonight. Um, I am here as a representative of the McInnes County Unit in Charlotte. Um, Young Marines, National Problem Organization, began in nineteen fifty-nine in Waterbury. Several former Marines felt led by an organization for boys that would be near the values of the Marine Corps. Their vision of offering leadership training and other life skills became basis of the LMS. Today, we remain a highly respected youth organization for boys and girls, age eight through high school veterans. From a whole beginnings as the I unit handful of boys, we have grown to two hundred and thirty-five units. With over seven thousand, seven thousand five hundred youth and two thousand five hundred adult volunteers participating in the forty states, district of Columbia, Japan, and affiliates in other countries. Through the years, it focuses to strengthen the lives of youth and the teens. We as Young Marines are taught the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, and the honoring of our veterans, good citizenship, community service, and living, living healthy, growthy lifestyles. We fulfill these objectives by building the core values of leadership, teamwork, and self-discipline. As mentioned, one of the pillars of the Young Marines program is to lead positive drug-free lifestyles and educate and encourage others to be safe. One of the ways we carry out this is to learn and teach the Project Alert circuit. Project Alert focuses on the education of standard gateway drugs, tobacco, alcohol, and gallons, prescription drugs, and marijuana, as well as substances that continue entering the world of drugs for youth and communities. We participate year-round in community projects and events that focus on reducing illegal drug abuse in our youth. In fact, in twenty twenty, Young Marines was the proud recipient of the U.S. Department of Defense Open Shield Award for Excellence in Youth Anti-Drug Emergency eleven. One of the primary nationwide anti-drug events that we participate in, Red Ribbon Week, which occurs annually in October. Um, Red Ribbon Week has a history that date back to the nineteen seventies and their era of the life of DEA Special Agent Ricky. Young Marines' anti-drug trap teamwork became famous all over the United States and Latin America. As an undercover agent, he perpetrated some of the highest profile drug trafficking vans and cartels the most instrumental way in eliminating many of them. Despite his high profile, he managed to use this based off newspapers and other media for several years. Unfortunately, as a strength and resource to the Mexican drug cartels, green is becoming increasingly difficult. On Thursday, February eighth seventh, nineteen eighty-five, at two P.M., Kiki was located, locked his badge and service revolver in the desk drawer and left to eat his life for lunch. According to DEA's reconstruction events, Kiki crossed the street to pick up his truck, turned off the truck's burglar alarm, and unlocked his door. He, excuse me. As he was stepping into cab, he was ambushed by five men. Before he could reach his radio signal for help, he was shoved into a waiting van and sped away. This was his last time anyone would see him alive. One month later, Kiki Camarena's body was of his informant Alfredo Dabla Abielo, was discovered seventy miles from Michoacan, Mexico. One of the drug trafficking groups he was trying to break up had been able to find this undercover agent. The two had been tortured, beaten, brutally bolder to death before being doted to the shell of a ring. Camarena was thirty-seven-year-old and life behind the life of the killing stones. The United States government pursued a lengthy investigation of Camarena's murder. The DEA launched a massive operation to capture two suspects. Umberto Alvarez Matichan, a physician who allegedly prolonged Camarena's life since his torture continued, and Javier Vasquez, a man believed to have been, excuse me, Marine. Two were tried in the United States District Court in Los Angeles. Alvarez trial resulted in the failure of Vasquez. However, he was sentenced to three life sentences for his involvement in the murders. Agent Camarena received numerous awards while in DEA. In addition, he posthumously received he's initiatives for one honor, the highest award given by the organization. Kiki ultimately gave his life in buying his drugs in a public order to do something to remember the sacrifice. Shortly after Kiki's death, Congressman Duncan Hunter and Kiki's high school friend Henry Luzano launched Camarena Club in Kiki's hometown of Mexico, California. People started wearing red ribbons to civilize their community to help reduce the demand for drugs in the communities. Hundreds of club members pledged to the drug-free lifestyle to honor the sacrifice paid by Kiki. These pledges were delivered to the first lady and senior lady during national concerts of parents who died in the U.S. Civil War. Several state organizations then called on community groups to wear red ribbons during the last week of October as a symbol of drug-free movement, as I'm wearing right now. Red laser, the AM make, um, give that to us. The act of wearing the red ribbon still got a national significance and grew into what we now know as a red ribbon campaign. In nineteen eighty-eight, National Family Partnership, also known as NFP, organized the first national Red Ribbon Week. President and Mr. Rayden serving as honorary cheerleaders. Kiki never asked to be here. He did, however, have a feeling that he could make a difference by making our country a better place to live and work. Thankfully, Kiki's dream is alive and well and thousands all over the country continue to recognize the Red Ribbon Week and pledge to remain drug-free. In fact, to date, Red Ribbon Week remains the longest-running drug-free convention in the country. So although they took his life, we continue to remember sacrifices where the Red Ribbon Week can fight illegal drugs. His dream will indeed remain alive. Today, as representatives of the Young Marines, I proudly honor the life and work of Kiki Camarena and pledge our commitments to life to live and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. We ask that you partner with us to do the same in your homes and communities. Together, we can make this dream a reality. If you'd like to learn more, you can go to redribbonweek.org or visit the Young Marines website. We also provide Young Marines-led programs for local schools. So please speak with those if you have any questions. We thank you once again for your time and the presence of those people who understand. May God bless you and your families.
Young Marines, I appreciate it. Thank you.
There's some, uh, there's some information. Thank you again. This is a wonderful program. It really needs leadership, citizenship, um, and it's phenomenal. So we've got some information about, we have some Red Ribbon Week slips. And again, if anyone's interested in a school program, these boys, the girls travel around and actually present to students.
Is, uh, problem Max, would he get?
He is not.
Okay, so, okay.
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. House six is, uh, Congress one. For our late dissection, thank you, Reverend Director. Prove lots of list. I'll take that. I'll play it out. Uh, can you post? Here, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, House six, the comments for this, if you have to hear here, my, my, thank you. On behalf of the United States, we'd love to hear from you. If you would come forward and, uh, say your name and address or the phone number, we'd, uh, we greatly appreciate that. Please go forward. Love to hear you, bro. Goodbye. Uh, good morning, bud.
So, bud.
Let's like the name. But we're all playing fair. I don't want anybody, brother. Love you here. Special, uh, presentation, uh, God, we just, uh, count with, we're in front of the folks. Appreciate that. Let's ask, uh, Mr. Davis Schwire to come forward. And, uh, Professor Frank Linda, or Son Mark, if you'd like to come up.
You might, but.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hang on. Who bring your chairs?
I'm good.
David, uh, Lieutenant Ward, board. Supervisor in our city for a number of years. And, uh, certainly greatly missed and appreciate everything you've done for us. Uh, Mayor Lieutenant, Kyle Hamon, you'll read the certificate. And one thing I want to mention is that, uh, let's, let's read this, let's read the certificate.
Okay. This is Resolution twenty dash twenty-one, Certificate of Appreciation, David H. Schwire, eighteen years of service. Whereas David H. Schwire has served the City of Conover for eighteen years and four months. And the Conover Street Department beginning as an operator, being promoted to Street Department Crew Leader in two thousand and three, and promoted to Street Department Supervisor in two thousand and twelve. These years of service have been marked by exemplary participation, vital for the accomplishments of the city. These years of service have been characterized by a zealous commitment to improve the community and publicly serve. Before arriving in Conover, Dave grew up on a farm where he trained horses and helped his father and brother run an international harvester dealership. He went on to an amazing career in construction, known for his willingness to do jobs that some say couldn't be done, such as being an underwater welder and demolitions expert. He built a sewer outfall line for the city of Dunkirk Shore under Lake Erie in the winter. He served as the Construction Superintendent at West Valley Nuclear Reprocessing Plant, where he helped design, engineer, and invent systems to limit radiation exposure to employees. Dave did many dangerous jobs in construction and was nearly drowned, crushed, or killed many times over. He survived due to his focus on safety, patience, and maintaining a clear head. He always made it back home to his loving wife Amy and sons Todd, Ryan, and Mark. His dedication to serving Conover citizens during catastrophic events such as wind, rain, ice, and snow by maintaining critical infrastructure necessary for protecting citizens, property, and damage, and ensure quality of life for Conover residents during such events. His years of providing employee management, construction management, and labor for major city projects such as Conover Station, Manufacturing Solutions Center, Conover City Park, the Norman B. Coley Amphitheater Project, Z-Gate Pedestrian Crossing, Ridge Drive Bridge, and annual pavement maintenance have been a critical element in the success of those projects. His leadership skills, communication skills, commitment, and pride in doing quality work for the citizens of Conover have been consistently illustrated. The City of Conover, the, the Conover City Council gratefully acknowledges his eighteen years and four months of service to the City of Conover and the community.
On behalf of the city, I'd like to present the give a house award, the topic of the event. And that's the key to our deal. I appreciate it. Appreciate it. You ever seen this guy on the backhoe? It's almost like an extension of his hand. Anyway, we appreciate you, buddy. All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you everybody for the, for the good trip. And, uh, I'm sorry you had to end, because only seventy-six were equipped. After ten years of me, I thought, I've got some health issues. We're working on it. If I can get out of it, you never know when I come back with a quarter.
No, you're always welcome. You got to keep it safe.
I'd love to give you all your hard time. And all the rest of you too, you can go and do that one week, maybe all. I've been very fortunate. Three kids. Great family. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I bless you, buddy.
Thank you.
Another presentation I'd like to make. It's, uh, not on the agenda. But it's one we'd like to make. I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Jimmy Clark, if you'd come forward, please, sir. That's you, Jimmy. I know you're looking.
Steve Jimmy Clark. You're turning the barrel, buddy. Get on there.
Jimmy.
Have I been set up? You gotta have a power, Tom.
He has with him his lovely wife Cindy, Brad Missy, and, uh, grandkids Abby, Amy, and Dick. Come up here, Mr. Clark.
From center, buddy.
I hear you. Say it. Well, here's the thing. Mr. Clark left us another month ago. And, uh, we wanted to, wanted to give him an award. And we wanted to try to do it at a special time. And of course, COVID's kind of knocked back our, our community event. Jimmy's always been wanting to be close to all our citizens and to our citizens who really wanted to, uh, see this. So unfortunately, COVID, the best we can do is live straight. So we're, we're here. Uh, we did, uh, hopefully pull one over.
Got me.
I'm gonna spread the perspective of Kyle Hamon to, uh, Mr. Clark, Mike.
Resolution one twenty-one, Certificate of Appreciation, Jimmy A. Clark, forty-seven years of service. Jimmy A. Clark has served the City of Conover for thirty-seven years, beginning as Assistant Public Works Director, thirty-five years as Public Works Director, and served as the city's Disaster Recovery Coordinator for multiple declared emergencies. He began his career in public service with the Town of Valdez as Street Superintendent for six and a half years. Then to the Town of Longview as Public Works Director for a year and a half. Then Town Manager for two years. His years of service have, have been characterized by a zealous commitment to improve the community and the public he has served. Earning an Associate's Degree in Management and Communications from Colbo Community College and certificates from the University of North Carolina School of Government at Chapel Hill, including Small Town Administrator's Course and Municipal Administration. He is a thirty-year member of the North Carolina American Public Works Association and American Water Works Association, where he served as Treasurer and Instructor for Customer Service to municipalities and utilities across the state. He served as a Coordinator for Regional and Countywide Efforts on the Technical Advisors Committee, helping to determine how utilities should be distributed throughout county, landfill issues, countywide water and sewer ordinances, and the regional compost facility. Partnering with the cities of Newton, Hickory, and Claremont for water and sewer services, Heat Mot Wagon, and its transition into the Greenway Transit Authority. Mr. Clark oversaw the construction of many public works and utility projects, including the renovation and upgrade to Conover's downtown in nineteen eighty-five and again in twenty seventeen. Relocating and expanding the public works facility in Fourth Street Southwest, rebuilding the northwest, northeast, and southeast sewer treatment plants, the Oxford Water Tank, multi-jurisdictional park, two bridges, and numerous parks. He is known for creating a culture of innovation among his staff, leading to the first community in North Carolina to deploy automated meter reading, the first in the county to implement rollout sanitation containers, herbicide recycling, and later rollout recycling. Other innovations include the swap loader program, year-round leaf collection, street riding, and advanced snow removal system. USA Today noted that Conover had more snow removal equipment than the City of Atlanta. He was noted as a mentor to other public works employees across the state, making himself available to advise and consult in all aspects of the profession. Mr. Clark is a well-known problem solver, prides himself in customer service, is a promoter of public works as a first responder. Mr. Clark instituted the Conover Public Works motto, "In the public works profession, praise must come from within." Your reward is the satisfaction of the job well done. Expect no applause and very little recognition. Although this statement is fact, you should not be discouraged as a public works employee. The rewards for dedicated public service far outweigh the lack of public acclaim.
Sure you want. We got this part to come here tonight. We actually didn't have to get him down here tonight. We just had less than him now, because he was there because one of his brothers was retired. We got him here and was on the court. So we appreciate that.
He's the reason I branched all those roads.
All forty-nine miles. I want to say that on behalf of all of our council members and Simon's proclamation and area citizens in Conover, we'd like to thank you and on behalf of those citizens, I'd like to award you the key to our city. I just, where I can work and do this.
Uh, one second before you start. This took nine months to get here. And we had already planned an event for honoring me with, and we just canceled because of COVID. Right at the last minute and arrived on Friday. We were going to have a event inside that. So it came in just in time, but it, boy, it hasn't planned. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate all your hard work. Uh, folks, this, uh, please be seated. Folks, this is, uh, this award is of state North Carolina. Uh, it's only awarded by Governor, Governor Roy Cooper. Very, very few people even qualify to put in for the award and even less get approved for the award. You have to have served a fair amount of time as citizens for at least thirty years to get this in. I'm pleased to read this on behalf of our governor, Governor Roy Cooper, Governor, proposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Jimmy Allen Clark for the Order of the Long Lake Vine. And it reads, "Here's to the land of the Long Lake Vine, the summer land where the sun doves shine, where the weed grows strong and the strong grow great. Cheers to down home, the old North State. Signed, Governor Roy Cooper, on the twenty-fifth of September, twenty twenty-one, with the seal of North Carolina." Folks, this is, this is something.
Thank you, Joel. Yes, I get it. I know y'all can have more than I believe. Kind of funny inside each other. Nah, uh, man, this is, this is cool. Never thought, you know, anything like that would happen. Um, kind of hard, you know, to, uh, stand here and accept something, you know, this is great. Let me think of something I need to say. Uh, I know back when work landed, you know, the retirement, you know, I was kind of thinking, you know, well, you know, I need to kind of tell a good life story. I think you did a pretty good job telling, you know, how I got where I am today. Let me go back just a little bit further than that, see if I can do it without messing up. Back when I was in high school years ago, I grew up with a family of eight. I always thought that I probably want to be something like a social worker. You know, when I was in high school. Well, life happened, things changed, and I didn't become a social worker. I went to work for, I'm about me. And, uh, sort of took a different path of working for the public or working, you know, to help people out. Uh, I became Public Works Director. And, uh, when you're in public works and public service, you get to help people in a lot of different ways. And so, uh, you know, the Lord didn't see it fit for me to be, you know, a social worker, but he gave me the ability to sort of help the public in a different way. And, uh, I appreciate you guys for that and of course the good Lord for that. And, uh, it's been, it's been a good ride and I've enjoyed it. I adore the other, and I just thank all of y'all so much. Appreciate it, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family, so, just an hour, uh, if we're available, we'll get some pictures made out. I'm saying with the resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one, I'll make that one. Thanks, Secretary, having all the favor they got. He's fine, but he's passing here. I'm amazed we got a call to, uh, next month. Unfortunately, uh, this, this, uh, Mandy is, uh, she's had an exposure and, uh, quarantine and all. So, uh, she's agreed to come next, uh, next month and do that. So we'll skip, uh, we'll take a late in most of the, uh, public here. Assume the result, uh, track located fifteen oh six Manuel Church Road. Uh, Land Director Eric Clayton, and welcome, sir. This is your first, uh, first house of the planet director. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the council. How I can follow that. As someone, you saw my wife come in, I thought she was here for moral support. Now I realize she just wanted to congratulate me. Zoning application R twenty-one oh seven for fifteen oh six Manuel Church Road. I see there are two addresses that are both in this rezoning. Uh, area with ill construction on behalf of the owner, headquarter, and land shark attachments has submitted this conditional district rezoning in order to expand the facility on Manuel Church Road. They want to build a hundred and five thousand square foot building next to the building they already occupied. That original building was built in nineteen seventy-one. Property was annexed in nineteen seventy-eight. That hundred and five thousand square feet pushes them over our limit for what you can build by rights without a conditional district. In talking with them, uh, the area that's going to be rezoned is expanded a little bit because they already know that they want to build two more buildings on their site. because they already know that they want to build two more buildings on their site. One of those, this is the building they wish to build. They want to put in a twelve thousand square foot training facility there, and they want to put in a fifty thousand square foot storage building and storage area as long, as well as some loading area. They're not a hundred percent sure what that's gonna look like yet, but they get the rezoning done now, they don't have to come back and have an amendment. So that's, that's the, that's what we're trying to work on here. And they're, they'll come back with plans for that other part down the road. They just wanna get this conditional district completed. At the planning board, there were a couple of citizens, we had a letter, and we had someone speak about concerns over increasing the intensity of the use and about increasing traffic on Manuel Church Road. NC DOT was contacted about this project and did not have any concerns over the road. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Eric Uergen will give instructions as he were.
Interesting, can you point out the areas of egress off, off of that property? On the, and, or the metal?
There are two areas. This, from what I understand, talking with Mr. Uergen, is their primary truck access. This one here is their employee access.
Eric, can you go back to the other, the other question though? I guess not, no, the one before it, yeah. The part there that the church, uh, we're gonna be rezoning?
We're not gonna be, uh, apparently this is a little side.
Great part there, is that part of the church, isn't it?
This is part of Manuel Church Road.
It's not?
This slide is incorrect, this has been taken out, this leg is not part of the.
Not the leg, talking about the square, right there.
That's part of the church's property, it's zoned DM one, and where the church and the parking lot is, is zoned R twenty.
Oh, it's already zoned, you get a point, that's, that's.
Right, but it's not.
Okay.
That, that's already, yeah.
Okay, alright, that's, okay.
This has been, uh, kind of a moving target. We started off with six separate properties, and this rezoning's been trimmed down to four. But that's why there's that long deal description in there, so we don't miss anybody.
This is a public hearing. Uh, this is likely to be here to answer any questions, but anybody here tonight would like to speak, or have to ask for, and we would love to hear from you at this time for this public work station, man, address for public record. Just please be grateful for the first, you know, all the three. Buddy, let's help call, say either way, love to hear from you. Final, uh, end of the closing public hearing, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Camera, all the papers say out. Anybody else want to? I'm seeing the ordinance fifty-five twenty-one, uh, everything that's, this split.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would order the change of the zoning map to reflect a conditional, uh, DM one conditional district that area described in the ordinance.
Per the, per the activation, uh, graphics, any questions for Mr. Smith? Sir?
Now, that's real close to former drive, sixteen miles of it.
Pardon me, sir?
It's real close, their entrances and air lane are real close to former six, to four line.
Um, it's, this piece of property here kinda goes out like this, and forms like an elbow. So it's, this entrance is several hundred feet away from the light, which would probably be about here.
There's only, what, about five houses out in that whole area, out in that?
Well, there's no houses on this side here, there's one or two houses on this side of the road, and then there's a business here. This, I believe, is the old cafe, which has been purchased by Corrigan Enterprises to use as a restaurant for his employees. There are a couple houses along here, Mr. Corrigan owns two of these four, I believe, properties. There are a few, uh, there's a mobile home park here.
The neighborhood should have been a traffic problem there.
I don't know what the traffic count is there, but like I said, DOT didn't have any issues.
Do you have any other questions? If all of them attack, but this problem one. Any questions? Did you want to, sir?
I'm looking to approve the rezoning request for R twenty-one oh seven, thirteen eighteen Manuel Church Road. There is just a manufacturing and general manufacturing, and small portion of residential. There is just a manufacturing conditional district. The time of the request is consistent with land development plan, and it's reasonable and in the public interest. It calls the government will allow an existing manufacturing business to expand, and the land development plan supports the expansion of industry that suit all locations in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that. We'll get a second one.
One second.
Secretary Hagan, Camera, all papers say out. I'm happy for both, both heads here. Thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate it. Look back, look here one more time here. Public hearing for, uh, considering rezoning for the track to take the five million.
Welcome again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rezoning R twenty-one oh six is requested, uh, by anyone else on behalf of the property owners, Klein Plantation LLC and Valley Farms LLC. This rezoning request is for this area of Klein Village that is undeveloped, the school is here. Uh, these lots here within this park area have been partially developed, the apartment building here. This road has been installed, there are no houses on it past the stream. These lots here were subdivided in two thousand and seven, I believe, but never built. The request, um, let's see, the zoning that's in place was based on this plan that was done in the late nineties. Uh, you can see the little bit of open space that's right here. This was originally all, um, neighborhood residential, which at the time was part of the larger block T and D district. These interior lots were all neighborhood center, which is what all of this is here. This was open space, and I can't remember which of these lots was mixed use. The request is to remove the open space portion and the mixed use portion that's in here. This down here will remain as open space. This request is to facilitate the sale of the property to the company US Development, who has represented here tonight. The intent is to get rid of those zones that were put in based on this plan, so that they can have just one flat zoning, and go in and come up with a new plan for this area. This plan that was done at the time had its alleyways, and all these lots are the back, are, are fed by alleys in the back. And these alleys would not meet our code right now, like the ones out there. Planning board heard this request and voted to recommend that City Council approve it. Yeah, any questions?
Are the lots from this generator, if it was built out completely?
Uh, we don't know exactly, because it's up to the developer to come up with a new plan. Uh, they may have a, a, a number that they can share with us. There's another item coming up where they're going to subdivide another forty, forty-seven lots, I think, uh, going on either side of this road that's already constructed. Um, and, um, I believe is their intent to purchase and come up with a new plan for that other part.
Will that one voter around there handle all that traffic, if it ever gets completely built?
It should, shouldn't be, I mean, there's not gonna be that much traffic back there, and it's pretty much gonna be all residential.
The road looks all around, so.
Yes. This property's taken, taken over years, so hopefully this will, will, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to see some of them built out there. We have, we really don't have that many unbuilt planted lots left, and it'd be nice, be nice to see the ones that we do have get built, especially the way it looks right now. Do you have any comments? Yes.
Talk about, uh, our housing shortage, if this would, uh, this would go in the right direction to, uh, to mitigate some of that problem.
Yes, plus, what I'm, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, here here on behalf of, uh, this project, Klein Village. I'd like to speak, uh, your City Council is up here about this time, uh, board.
Thank you, Dave, and, uh, address to the public record, good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Crisp, I'm here on behalf of US Developments. I'm mayor, I'm a pro town member of the council, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my full address is nineteen thirty South Ridge Drive, Elmont, North Carolina. I'm a half of US Developments, and, uh, we'll claim, we claim engineering, it's like, thank you for the opportunity to speak and present these projects, uh, to you. And having driven up here, uh, once a week for the past six months, it's clear that there's a lot of really exciting work happening, uh, in Conover. New jobs, industry, opportunities, and growth, all signs of a very healthy community. Anytime we go into a new project, we always approach it, uh, as a partnership. And, uh, we're really grateful for the opportunity to partner with the city of Conover to bring, uh, some new homes, uh, in a development that, as you said, never really got finished. We're really excited to bring over two hundred new lots, future homes, to the city of, of Conover. Uh, we've been in development business for over twenty-five years, and had the opportunity to participate in some really exciting projects over the years. Berthdale Village in Hunterville, uh, Legend Oaks, Charleston, South Carolina, Larkin, and Statesville, and we're excited to add Klein Village to that list of projects. I'm not gonna say much, but I do wanna just take a moment and acknowledge, uh, Donald and the rest of the planning staff, Alan and Eric. We sat, first sat down with them about six months ago, and have met with them many times over the last several months, and have been a real pleasure to work with. You guys are a really good team, uh, in place here. I know that you guys are going through some transitions, but I wanted to acknowledge that the team that has been in place here. Um, so we really look forward to continuing this partnership with the city uh, with the next several months in here, so, thank you so much for your consideration.
Right, we appreciate that, thank you.
Donald, question for you.
Yes, sir.
Will these homes be in equal value as the homes that are already there, or?
Yes, sir.
How they gonna work?
Yes, sir, they'll be consistent with, uh, the existing homes.
That's good.
Like you. Yes, sir.
One comment I'd like to make is, uh, this, this sleep theme, and his wife live there, he is planning director, he had any issues, I believe he's in another spot, so, he didn't have any issues.
Right here. Uh, this is the public hearing, anybody have a question for, on behalf of, of this project? If I want to make a motion?
Close, public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Paul Wright, Mr. Carroll. All papers say out. Anybody have a motion, motion, yes, here. Thank you, ordinance fifty-six twenty-one, uh, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would order the changing of the zoning map to reflect that this area here described in the ordinance be changed from NC, MX, and OS to all MR.
Any further questions for Mr. Smith to give, or we can take a motion, about five and four?
Make that motion.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the City Council finds the map amendment to be consistent with the land development plan to identify the area as residential. Council finds this rezoning request to be reasonable and in the public interest because the wanted development will provide new housing options to our community to decide is conveniently located near existing infrastructure and services.
Thank you, thanks. Uh, second one, I say, second, Mr. Smith. All the papers say out. Anybody else want to? Uh, yes, here, thank you. Thank you, everybody, David, appreciate it, so, thank you, that's our. I'm thirteen, it's a major subdivision revision of Klein Village, uh, one dash, and, Mr. Smith?
This major subdivision plot, as you see up here, would add these additional lots in a new layout from the original plan, as I discussed during the revision issue. Forty-seven additional lots, it would eliminate these two studs that were left to go with the original design. There are, there's a, uh, area left there for a road connection. There's an area left there for a road connection, as well as an area there for a road connection to the future. Given the lack of built lots we have right now, I recommend that we accept this, and that you all approve this thing, so.
Any questions, Mr. Smith, you hold, uh, on, on that shit?
And it's, I think it's gonna be like regular, screw, rough, and have the alleyways up the other part of this section out here. This, these lots are at, at least fifty feet wide, which is what's in the area where I live now, there are a half foot lots of that wide. So it's gonna be a similar layout, they're not gonna have a garage in the back and an alley feed.
Is that a good sign?
I really like the way my house works, but it's not effective for the city, and it's probably not cost efficient to build.
Generally, the amount of construction that the developer has to do, houses are pretty expensive, it's a dollar, okay? And then it also doubles the much trade maintenance in the city, creates some service issues for all of us. More common result is actually easier for us to manage. Take your glass. I'm first, we approved the revision. I can, I can, sir, Paul Wright. Any further discussion, question, first case, I'll first say out. Uh, like, motion, have a period, thank you, appreciate it. And I'm fourth, thank you, just, uh, uh, our house car.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a, this is a major subdivision, it's both a major subdivision and a recombination plot. It is taking, uh, this original Punch Loop property and adding in several other pieces that were purchased along the way, and then dedicating this right away to the new alignment of Punch Loop Road. I believe there's some other, there's some other big report that we're waiting on.
Agreement conditions to be signed off by the developers, additional agreement. I just read it, additional easements that are required on the second page of this agreement, and as well as the release of the right of way from the music, the trust, and the time we're putting the fund on. I think Donald is willing to count.
It hasn't been done unless you have it, you know?
Yeah.
We'll talk about that. You'll, you'll wait just a second. You're sure?
So this project's just been kinda slowing along, this is one more step to get it done.
As mayor, this is council, I'm a, um, so, you remember, remember this was lifted at the forty acre track. It resided within basic limits of Punch Loop. And in addition to that, they burnt all the property here, and subdivided it all from different springs, HSM. So now you have about seventy-five acre track plus, I think it's got seventy-five acres in the road that was divided. Thus allows to recombine this property with two large tracks, one on the top, one on the south. Lineates the area for the road, lineates the area for all utilities, including telecom, water, and silver, and also an extension beyond the property, beyond the full site, that allows to complete a long range project from the transportation plant coming from this road that connects into, to rest, and taking the end up of our facilities, future properties, that, that house. Some lines in the future will be started to split all the way out to the electric. We provide for that as the first way, and we want to keep that. We do have other votes coming up behind this, allowing us to continue to live as part of the law. Still ours is the best in the city, or historically, and for dollars, that's in electric.
I can say, I feel like they arrived at fifty-seven, fifty-eight. So more than fifty years, I'm going to tell you, it's a large project.
Right. It's my concern, you know, where it gets, help me out with this. Thank you for letting me talk about that. Do you want to leave me to the man with us?
Yeah, I'll just leave whatever says.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
I was like, the other thing is this is preliminary plan. We'll come back to that and come up with everything in the ground. The final plan, if you're tactically aware of this, you can thank for the water and sewer line. We typically don't do a preliminary plan for those public, like this is new for us. It's because there's so many parks and also so much infrastructure and you're dealing with the roads and DMT and drinks. So we're going to best to go ahead and handle it now. Get it out of the way so that we can complete the rest of the projects and we can add the flat back and be through the path of, I think, probably spring.
I'll see you up front of our house here if you'd like to come forward. Introduce yourself to our council. We appreciate it. Thank you for your investment. Thank you. Pleasure.
So, city, you've been great doing this.
I'm Spencer Peazak with Premier Development Partners.
Linda Sherman, Premier Development, we're also here at Conover.
So I think we're the owner and the developer. That's our team. And this is our fourth project for our establishment. We have a fifth one going on.
Obviously, you got your banners up.
Our big one.
Yes. On our posts here, our work. Anything that you need from city or things they live on? I know you hit us a long way, but they grow with us now.
No, we've been working very closely with Donald and Alan and actually with that department that I've been making work with as well. So everyone's been, all team players, we're hoping to open by the end of November.
Well, this is very appreciative and grateful for our, I mean, to you, sir. Thank you. You said you'd take your, you opened on the end of this November?
Yeah, except for the road, we have temporary access. The road isn't, did, yet, but the rest of the project is.
Great.
Sheriff, I think I may have found a typo in the agreement on this matter. The number two on page one, it says the delit show bear all costs. Should that read developer?
Shoot, can't. Great. Make that motion with that correction.
Thank you very much.
Have a second on that? Second, interrupt this gap. Any further discussion, questions, Mr. Slipp? For more property development? All the papers say out. All right. You want to come to it? Yeah, thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Item fifteen is our ordinance fifty-seven. Mayor, members of council, for those of our developers and the members of our house and Premier Development Partners, we got a couple grants and this will go to the event. The first one, this is the only one allowed to build water lines and the third line is the hopefully all known property. The total project was bid twice. We have zero responsibilities to cover the bid market and the tight timeline on this. So I've got permission from Goldenly to allow for a solicitation of private bids. So we still have a bid process, but we're probably in form of process. We got to state that at the first year and now we'll be Goldenly's policy by the third rate for private solicitations. The Cranmore bidder, PM Plan Construction, is also a supplier of materials inside for water and sewer. Five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. What should we do by adopting this is we allow the city attorney and the city manager to enter their contract to PM Plan Construction to perfectly close the bill. As their construction, we pay that out through this budget minimum that you have tax now. We'll start with letter of fifty-seven twenty-one. And that's one of the three actions that you will take. You'll certify the bid tag and then you'll allow the city to terminate the contract based on those conditions. And then we'll prove it to the seven hundred and one. And I believe our house has a check required. So essentially, we're kind of doing for the developer and the state. It's not unusual for us to do this with grants or common development. It's also unusual for us to, like I say, from the previous action that you took with Con Village, the developer does the extra to contribute to that. But the grants, the places, the projects complicate all that. So this is a hybrid. I hope I don't ever have to do a part about the beginning. But this is the way we have to do it. We have to have agreements, lacking of agreements. We make sure that that bears in perspective. And you all have a tenant who is providing the jobs. You have a developer who's providing building. Multiple land users. We have also DMT and more success others deal with. So if we're going to build an airport, that might be one thing that might just more cost that. Home certification of bid, like that first. I know we've had some issues getting bigger. Yeah, I think the issue there is that in order to speed the project up, Premier Development, Premier Conover Development, well, the materials are guaranteed inside, as you know, there's supply chain issues through the process. There's rare carrier things from policies that's always. If I remember correctly, the water line estimate on this project was one hundred and eighty-three thousand. Today, with materials and with construction and labor installation, it's over four hundred thousand dollars. And that's in less than two years, that's how much the price is there. So in order to control cost and cost materials, that kind of, I think, spooks and contractors. So that eliminates some of our bid pool. And then there's a very tight timeline on this project to get in in November. There's a lot of construction, a lot of dirt to do, and all that happened. So the full material, the timeline, the first of materials, it hurt our market on the proposed bid. So I think now when they pay off, helping us with this and they're reputable contractor, of course, I'll pray these directors, contractors, I think you're going to be able to get that line through the company.
First, I'd be certain on bid.
Yes, sir.
Motion on that piece?
Then we should submit some people on the pipe and the five of eighteen.
Stayed. Thank you, Mr. Black. Second, Paul Wright. Any further discussion on that? All the papers say out. Next, we're going to confirm the contract. Matthew, has any questions on that? Any partnership on that?
No. Mayor, I believe we're just going to, we do have three hundred and thirty-eight thousand in hand and check. And then there is secure the two hundred and fifteen hundred and ninety-nine. I think I'll be on the board for a little bit. For a little bit.
Everybody got that?
We're paying the western, get my cell, we're building, is that right?
You want to pay that? The grandest. Thank you, Chris. Any further questions, Mr. Matthews, on the contract? All right, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Appreciate that. Second, thank you. All the papers say out. Any vote? Motion passed here. And last, the ordinance fifty-seven twenty-one. Third, you'll step forward and take that and then I'm waiting. Have some text for you.
Oh, I can't. I'm sorry.
Sounds like a pretty nice lady, buddy. Well, Kirk, there you go.
All right. And we've already approved fifty-seven twenty-one, right? So. That's different. We're going to have.
No, 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 thank you.
So ordinance fifty-seven twenty-one would amend the project row infrastructure capital project ordinance. The odds were developed a contribution of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to be used for the construction of the utilities.
Wow. I appreciate it. Everybody, everybody really pulled, pulled on on this. So then, had a lot of moving parts. Proud of everyone. Thank you. I'll make that question. Second, thank you for saying, you have to, all the papers say out. Any votes? All right. It's manual debt. Resolution. I do one more.
To the. Name or being, let me just start at twenty pounds. I'm submitting to you our vacation policy, administer our personnel policy. Last time we were here, we kind of, whenever there's a, everybody again. The red one is part of it. And our vacation count compares to our national municipality, county government. As you see, we start there, ladies and everybody else, we're trying to root you down. And these are our three proposed options. And A is meaning of change. And B is likely to be a change. And option C is exiting the same. So Mr. Steel is going to take it over from there.
Okay. So just going to drop some numbers on you here real quick. Currently, our employees approve vacation at a rate of eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one hours a year. That's a cost of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. So if we were to adopt option A, we would likely see an increase of no more than forty-three thousand dollars in our vacation accrual. That's our liability. If we adopt option B, you'd likely see an increase of no more than ninety thousand. And option C, no more than one hundred and eight thousand. And I say no more because that's assuming this is the most that the accrual can increase if you adopt A, B or C. Assuming no employee uses vacation time and we don't pay out any vacation time for employees that leave the city. So that's the, that's the absolute most you can increase.
Got you.
Just a few more numbers for you. So option A, you would see an increase of about zero point seven, eight hours per pay period. That's a bi-weekly pay period for employees. Option B, one point five, six hours. And option C, one point eight, four hours. And then you see the percentage increases over there to the right. So if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to help finance it right now.
Yeah, I've been working that with council. Appreciate your time, work and staff on that. I went into maybe, I just went and looked at my check, they're maxed and did a great job. Thank you. What did you agree with about it? Natalie, for us to be competitive, if we want to be competitive, you're our best. Are you recommending plan B?
Yeah, I would definitely recommend, obviously, I would love to have B, but B would be the second best one.
Is that something that we could adopt at this point in time and then revisit?
Absolutely.
If it's working or not working?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, as we all know, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Get competitive.
Absolutely.
Question, does this have to be, we can adopt this now, but it changes to, does that have to be done in budget or can that be done at any time during the year?
It can be done anytime, just like we are now.
I don't think it's not really going to affect the budget right now. If a department doesn't have any salaries in their, in the budget to pay out vacation time, if someone leaves, we can do a budget limit at that time. But I have no issues with it. Our balance sheet is very strong and of course, we intend to keep it that way. But just, just some more numbers for you. Our quick ratio, which is kind of like you might have heard the asset test or liquidity ratio, which measures a government's ability to meet its short-term obligations. At the end of last fiscal year was nine point four. And this is un-audited numbers right now, but at the end of six thirty twenty-one, if we've increased to ten point one. And the UNC School of Government, they've published a benchmark of three point oh for that quick ratio. So we're exceeding that by about three times that benchmark.
Wow. Very glad.
Awesome.
So folks, if you've got any questions, comments on that, kind of like this, that representative, we need to be more competitive. Plan B, you look at that slide, take a look. See if that, see if that's something that we want.
I have a point of clarity, questions of clarity. Is this resolution nineteen twenty-one or sixteen twenty-one? The outline says nineteen twenty-one, but the resolution in the agenda says sixteen twenty-one.
Nineteen twenty-one. Sixteen was probably the last one. I'll make sure to correct it before we get the man's.
Yeah.
That was the previous one, yeah, that was.
Okay. Yeah, they got called together.
I think it's.
Oh.
I'm not.
He's not up early.
Mayor, I'm going to be, the option nineteen twenty-one, you have to run the first-hand policy to option B.
Option B. Second, second, because there's, there are lots. Any further discussion? All the papers say out. Anybody but? Motion passed here. Lots of good work here. Appreciate the back and forth, Donald. And go against employees. This is our committee board. Body of my house, lots of chairs. We don't have a next to this, but.
Mr. Payman and myself ended the Western People Council of Governor Board meeting last Tuesday. One of the very interesting things at the end of the meeting was that the product had brought in the Southeast Regional Directors Institute, the first male of two directors. And they went out in the community and done online surveys with policy board members, regional leaders. One of them interviewed regional leaders, focus group sessions, economic development, chamber of commerce, planners, human service, local government managers and masterminds and local elected officials that did not sit down on the Capitol Board meeting. And all of this and everything came, the tire color was probably one of the top three in the United States and everything around here is outstanding. Tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely.
And that was one fantastic, good meeting with him.
I did participation in this.
Yes, you did. I did as well. A lot of good information passing that.
There was a lot of good stuff I heard today.
Not the office.
We appreciate it. I would like to say, for our turn, I would see a matter for, you know, we're, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Tommy. I'll say fifteen years. Fifteen and a half. Fifteen and a half years here. Came here as a young man, leading here as a, a little bit, a little bit, sort of, a relative man. He's done a wonderful job for us and really, you know, one thing I'll say is, kind of glad to be sort of with him is that, you know, never, never have to pull. You're always pulling, unless you're pulling, you're pulling back. He's always out front, always pushing and pushing the balance in Conover County. I think, I know he'll do very well there. Those folks up there, especially the staff that get in and serving off for us, for the citizens out here that we'll begin our recruitment phase tonight. And our goal is to have a city manager place no later than first of April of twenty twenty-six. We appreciate you, what you're paying to admit to our city. We will have, we will have a social event later this month. We fill the protocol and celebrate his, celebrate his term here in the city. Just want to say on behalf of all of us here and our citizens, well done. Thank you, appreciate that.
Just got a quick question that we had planned to do October thirty event. The numbers have turned down. Our death rate is still pretty high. The old county will talk for a few of you to see if you still want to have it on.
We can all count on our property to see if we still want to have it on October thirty again. And staff is, is armed and ready to deep in with the transition and all the things going on. I think we should get to have a little bit of the free. We are sort of going on to a Christmas tirade. I think it was very popular last year, we did give you up for that power line, but it's getting ready. So five people there soon. It's really your pleasure if you'd like to continue on October thirty or not. We're here for the people. And that's the only questions I have. We'll talk about that with staff later. Other than that, I'm open for questions. Please welcome our new city clerk, Stephanie. I think she's going to really enjoy her, she's canceled with sixteen-year project finish, and she's been involved for seventeen years. Also serves as the IP director and HR director, which she's got a strong, strong background. We're going to start a invitation. Thanks. Look forward to many years of service. Thank you. Folks, appreciate you being here. At this time, we're going to go into a fun session, or a general statue, one forty-three dash, three eighteen point eleven, with personal, personal development. We will take action. So we appreciate everybody being here. We will meet in these chambers or go to the protocol. And we appreciate them all of being here. I'm going to ask the following to say, that would be city council, city attorney, the five years, all of the big ones, and governor, and deputy city clerk, head guard, director, mountain men. Thank you all. Appreciate you guys.